All right, so let's go ahead and get this meeting kicked off. We'll call it to order. Looks like five oh three. Presentations downtown Development Authority update. Ms. Abby McClair. You are on the podium.
Hi, Council. Good evening, everybody. Um, we have a few things on tap, no pun intended, but I have a potential client and prospect who, there's two of them tomorrow, that will be looking at a couple of buildings in downtown Tipton for a brewery. So, we met, Jessica, Rob, Danny, Pete, myself, met about some definitions of what is defined as a brewery versus brew pub. And there were several senate bills that helped change this, senate bill eighty-five and then an amendment bill to eighty-five. So, we're going to continue to, to take a look at those. But I do know that there will have to be some local adjustments to zoning also. Because brewery is technically defined as, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, as a manufacturing facility. Because they do want to manufacture and process this beer on site. So, I know that in the future, we will have to take a look at some of those zonings and again amendments to what is defined as light manufacturing and then adopt ordinances allowing these breweries. But I talked to Ellen Hill, who is the Main Street Director in Macon today about what they did and what they looked at. So, I do have that information that I can share with, with Rob and Pete in our next meeting. And just want you guys to know that the economic benefit, last year, the craft beer industry contributed twenty-seven point six billion dollars to, to US economy. So, that's great. So, then we also have some SPOS funded projects that we've completed recently. We have, we have the Chestnut Avenue project, which is happening right now. That's thirty new additional parking spaces plus eight that the Downtown Development Authority funded the changes for. And these are more so on the off second avenue there, on the left side of Kelly's Cleaners, if you're facing Kelly's Cleaners. If that makes sense. So, he deeded or gave right of way to part of his property to the city in order for this change to happen. But this will also, this will be a public parking lot. It was eleven spaces, but has been reduced to eight due to some other changes there. We closed on a grant of twenty-five thousand dollars with USDA this, last week. Communities and facilities grant for light poles. So, the Downtown Development Authority has put in seventy-five thousand dollars to get this. Twenty-five thousand for a total of a hundred thousand new street light poles. We're working on replacing the ones on Tipton Avenue. Those, if you notice, they're in front of Fresco are still the older light poles. This project has been going on since two thousand fifteen, if I'm not mistaken, and has gone in phases. Then our crosswalks, we completed phase one of the crosswalks around town and phase two. There's roughly forty-eight thousand dollars left in our crosswalk fund. We've selected a couple sites based on safety and walkability. We met with John Shepherd on Friday and I've met with DOT and they're actually looking at the crosswalk here from First Street to Don Julio's. That, there is a, a sign that is there. ESGA constantly puts it out, but it's constantly run over and knocked down. So, in my argument with DOT that we needed something there with a barrier that, you know, will help with the safety issue. Because if you step off the curb from Don Julio's, walking towards First Street is dangerous. There's a curb there and there's, the row of parking prevents a lot of sight. So, we're really excited about that. As far as projects in development, we have the Tipton Town Center, which is the Nixon's property. They'll begin that, she said, within the next two weeks. We're really excited about that. She secured a new restaurant on the front there in the bicycle shop. It will be kind of a modern eclectic type of place with outdoor patio and seating. The Golden Building, she will begin work in December or January. She is not really sure of that, but she's got big plans for those phases. And those are the things that have really been happening since I've been here. We're really excited about what has happened and the growth to come. Very excited about this brewery. I know that a lot of communities have them and they do bring a lot of economic vitality to downtown. So, thrilled about meeting with them tomorrow and seeing where this goes, so.
Good deal.
That's great. Thank you.
Frank, you got anything to add then, the liaison with the DDA?
Yeah, I think Abby pretty much covered it all. We have a lot of projects going on with the DDA, a lot of things happening. A couple of things that we're also working on. One is we, of course, we sold the, we closed on the Taylor Building, which was adjacent to the DDA. We're gonna have a kind of a, kind of an adult daycare type place there. Where adults with dementia can, can go during the day. So, care care is gonna have a day free. We've been working on getting that ready for them. And also, the, the old Davis Music Building, which DDA has purchased, which was the first African-American hotel in Tipton. And we're in the process of getting that stabilized and hope to sell that in the future.
Good deal. An adult daycare, never heard of that.
That's just a colloquial term, so not real.
You wiped and dropped you off.
All right, moving right along to old business, review of the proposed agreement with Golden Environmental. Ricky Harvey and Pete. You are up next.
Thank you. Just as an update from last time, we talked through the contract before you. Is there, are the suggested changes in highlights that we've worked for months on? We've talked these over with Richard. Our last work session included discussions about that. You were okay. We were, we were going to make some adjustments to some minor language. We did that. The, the one thing that remained were the rates. And we explained that Richard was working on a pilot program for the last couple of months. And we did meet this morning with Richard Golden. The Solid Waste Committee and I, we met and Richard, or excuse me, and Ricky, we met last week to talk about these details again. Richard didn't have anything that he provided us, but we did talk through the pilot program. And although he did tell us that while the material wasn't in addition to what, what, it didn't add anything going once a week, it didn't add to the monthly totals. Yard trash, for instance, he had to add two point five more days plus the Saturdays to clean up the city. In addition to one additional truck to make that happen for yard trash collection. That's once a week. He had to add some, you know, truck and some time to make that happen. That's what he, that was the result in the, the pilot program. For bulk collection, he had to run additional trucks on Fridays and Saturdays along with the boom truck. We did have a little spike in increase in junk tonnage, thirteen tons in September, fourteen tons in October. But really, overall, it did not add a lot. We were probably assuming incorrectly that it was gonna add a whole lot more material. But realistically, just manpower and truck usage. So, we talked through that and we said, Richard, what is it going to take to suggest, on pricing wise, to say for once a week, yard trash collection? This is what we wanted, or you wanted for us to bring back to you. So, we've talked through at two dollars and fifty cents increase per home. That would take care of once a week yard trash collection. The, the junk for once a week, that would add one dollar per home. So, all, all in all, that was a three dollars and fifty cent increase that Richard Golden has suggested. Or we suggested to him based off of our numbers. The Solid Waste Committee, again, we, we threw this a little bit. So, we wanted to share that with you, but you know, we're open for discussions and, but this is really ready to go. It is a one-year contract like we talked about, but I would suggest that we, we hold tight with, if, if we could for, you know, for, for one year to see how it goes. And it's, it's obviously your decision how you wanna handle every week or every other week, collection on the debris.
So, if we keep it as is, we don't go to the, once a week, we would, we would not see either one of these increases. It'd be back to the original.
It would stay the same.
Pricing that he gave.
Fifteen ninety-one, right.
Okay. Several things. One, this, I'll, I'll go back to the same thing, issue I had before, the size of the, of the yard debris pile. And I think the language says if it's too large, then the homeowner has to then pick it up or they got a certain time and. I'm still struggling with that. As one who cleaned up the yard in one area, quickly became that size of that pile. And I don't understand what we're trying to do. I mean, we're evidently, we're not trying to clean up the city of Tipton because we restricted from some small area that you can put your yard debris there. And I think that's totally against what we've talked about doing. And I mean, if, if they wanna take half of it, but don't force the homeowner. If you're cleaning it up, I realize it might come in trees and all that, different story. But I mean, to me, the, I'll say again, the yard debris issue wasn't the every other week. It was not consistently every other week. Complaints I had were people that it's been three weeks or it's going, they, they never knew what day. Now, since he's done his pilot, he's come the same day every week. When he was coming every other week, it was not the same day. So, I knew exactly when he did or he didn't. That was the issue to me, not that, I mean, it just, to go increase three fifty, I can tell you right now, I'm not gonna vote to increase people's rates three dollars and fifty cents. Not gonna happen. Leaking trucks, I agree with, maybe with the five hundred dollars for the first incident, but we should raise it after that. If it's the same truck and it leaks the same, it should be a thousand dollars. Something's gotta get his attention, but for the same truck to leak every time. He's gotta repair the street, got a certain amount of time. What happens if he doesn't repair it? I mean, we, you know what happens. We've had issues that the contract says this and he doesn't do it and we don't do anything. So, if he doesn't repair the street in a certain amount of time, you know, do we hold his check until he repairs it? I would. That's the only thing gets attention. He done repaired it in that time, hold his check and when he repairs it, give him the check. Same thing about reports not being turned in. You know, consistently, we heard for the last two years, he didn't turn his report, he didn't turn in his report. I'm sick to death hearing about he didn't turn in his reports and we don't do anything about it. Can we put in there, if he doesn't turn his report in, Rob, we don't have to pay him until the, the reports are turned in?
We can put anything in.
I mean, that, that gets the attention. I mean, we're just, he's gonna ignore this turn reports in. He ignored it for the last five years. He not gonna start next year, hold his check. What if there's this violation of speed, you know, you're gonna, can't go over ten miles an hour? What happens if he gets caught going over ten miles an hour? What do we do? Does he get fined? What if he gets caught a second time? What do we do? We need to put something in there. We're just putting some words in there with no actions that are gonna stop these issues from happening. It's not like we don't have some history that we know the action, that things are gonna happen. I mean, we need to get tough. So. That's my comments about it.
You guys are on the Solid Waste Committee. Was, was your recommendation to go to the every week yard debris?
No.
No, so you're saying fifteen?
We didn't, we didn't have these figures at the time from Richard. We were, we were fine keeping it status quo where, as a same price. And I agree with Jack, part of the problem with the yard debris was they didn't pick it up consistently in the past and that's been a big issue. Here lately, he's done a better job. If he does, if he picked it up consistently, I think every other week, we're probably okay. But that, that's been the issue.
And with bulk waste.
And the bulk waste.
Johnny that I know has that issue, not consistent.
I, I really think that if we, we wanna go to a, to a weekly, we need to really study that for a while. I mean, cause that, we're talking about, they're raising the prices on people. I wanna make sure we're doing the right thing when we do that. Don't wanna rush into that right away.
Plus a twenty-two percent increase. I mean, I'm, I'm not a real big fan of that either.
But it says here, the recommendation would be for one year yard trash and junk collection. So, that's why I was just trying to verify that.
That's it, yeah. If we wanna do that, I was told that, of course, that was not the last video, it was on the film, but told you guys about the weekly.
Well, now, I like to keep the race down. And we know, now, we are, we, we sitting here, we know this, we know day from night, that Richard ain't gonna do right that. So, like you said, we need to start holding him accountable. We can't just keep hearing that, Richard. Richard do this, or Richard do that, cause Richard ain't gonna do it. Richard wanna do it the way he wanna do it, stop paying him his check. Hey, if you hit him in that back pocket, it gives, that gives him attention. Well, until then, he just gonna do like he wanna do. And we got, we got one of the best waste, consolidated waste person in, in, in the world, Ricky Harvey. Ricky knows this thing in and out, up and down, sideways, he knows. So, now, when, when, when the board asks Ricky to come in and give his, his recommendation, some flipped out, Johnson is on the board, some flipped out. But now, what we got, really, what we got to start doing is holding Richard accountable. We got to stop talking about it and hold Richard accountable.
And put that language in the contract.
That's right. Put it in there. So, we can, so we can hold him accountable. Because it, our, our residents, they, they tired of hearing the same song and dance over and over again. They said we look like voice guys up there. We can't take no action. You know, hey, we grown people. You, these people elected us to do a job for them. So, we got to start doing the job for them, set the list there.
Ricky, I'm gonna ask a question. I think the Finance Committee has always been a proponent of the city handling the yard debris in bulk waste. Is that, I mean, I know they look good on paper, but listen, you know, I've seen several deals that look great on paper. But then when they come to, to fruition, it, it just doesn't work out, you know? So, I mean, you're experienced in this field. What, what are your opinions on us taking that aspect over? And, and then just allowing whoever to, I guess be Richard for the year, just to handle the collection of the recycle and, and the garbage. And then we can control the yard debris pickups and the bulk waste pickups as we need, see necessary. There's no need to hire this liaison. Cause I feel like the trash pickup and the, and the recycling is done in a timely manner. It's just our problems, I've always been in bulk waste and yard debris. But if we are handling that as a city, you know, I think that we, just a simple phone call to whoever is gonna be ESG or, or you guys or whoever handles it of this new department. But you know, like I say, it sounds all great on paper, but is, is, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, is that a?
It can be done, but still, it's gonna cost. I mean, you're talking about large piles. If you wanna go out there and clean it all up, it's gonna cost us to process it somewhere. So, that fee has got to move back to the citizen. It's creating the problem starting. You know, you limit something, just like you do anything else. You don't go on Walmart and can't buy fifty gallons of milk, you know, and have the same price as three gallons or whatever. You know, it's, it's all according to what you're gonna do. If you wanna do it, we'll clean it up, but there is a cost attached to all of it.
Right, but, but we're cleaning it up today. I mean, I. Trees, I mean, trees are one thing. Whoever cuts them is gonna take them off. Now, we either want people to clean up their darn yards and put it on the street or we don't. And if they clean it up now and Richard takes it off, he's got that in his costs. So, is that truly the additional cost to the city? I don't think so. I mean, I'd like to, I'd like, Pete, you and Ricky, sit down and y'all go back through the numbers again. I mean, we're not, we can do something over the next year. I mean, we, it's not something we could start now. And let's get serious about that. And, and if we're, if we're serious about cleaning up the city and people cleaning up their yards and not having them look like, I mean, then, then we're gonna, we do something about that. Otherwise, let's just quit talking about it and let them, let the yards get to however they wanna be.
My thing is, is that we gotta, yeah, technically, you know, this contract with Richard, I'm, I'm assuming that we're gonna continue down the same road. He's gonna handle the bulk waste, he's gonna handle the yard trash. I wouldn't say that we'd start that now, but we have a year to go in there and get bids on, not bids, but estimates on, on trucks. You know, personnel, find that, you know, and try to somewhat, I know y'all done some work to that effect or whatever already. But just get kind of actual numbers. And I understand that it, it may just be, oh yeah, this looks great on paper, but if a storm comes and then you're talking about this and you know, you, you can never prepare for the worst of the worst. But at least, you know, we should have an idea if the city were to take on this venture. This is what it's gonna cost us and this is what it's gonna cost per household. And, and then we can look at that in a year's time. So, when, if this comes up and we're not satisfied with the thing, we put this thing back out for bid, we can say, hey, listen, all thing we're gonna be putting down is the garbage and the recycling, cause the city of Tipton's gonna handle this. Or hey, guys, we've looked at the numbers, it's just not feasible for us to do it. Let's go out there and find a contractor that can handle all these things. We vetted this thing as, as much as we possibly can. And I know you guys have done, already done a ton of work, Ricky and Pete, I know y'all have. I truly appreciate that, but let's just.
Yeah, what you're saying, Wes, is the recommendation of Solid Waste Committee. Well, we were, we talked the other day that we should continue now with the, with the current price, the current every other week of Richard on a consistent schedule. And then we have the next year to look at whether we wanna make any changes. Whether we take it in-house, whether we contract somebody else, whatever.
And we also need to know if you're gonna unleash the limits, it's gonna cost you. So, tell, you know, let me know what you want. If you wanna unleash the limits, that they can put out a house full of furniture versus as we are stating in here, five pieces.
Well, I think what we would end up probably doing, if we were to do this, would be somewhere to keep some of these same, you know, restrictions and whatnot on it. Now, I mean, yeah, we're not gonna be able to come out here and move the whole house, you know? Keeps restrictions, if that were to happen, yes, you have to contact the city of Tipton, you have to get a special pickup. It's gonna be an additional, you're gonna pay that in advance before we get this picked up. If not, then we send code enforcement out there, so code violation, you're gonna be fined for it. I mean, I think that's the avenue that we could take in a situation like that. But like you say, a guy, a person's moving out or, or somebody, you know, has a refrigerator and a couple of items or whatever. You know, five, six items or something like that, it's not a big deal. But yeah, you can't be moving out a two-story house.
It was like a tree, it was like the way we do tree services and cutting the tree down. They pay separate. A landlord kicks somebody out, moves all their furniture out there, they have to pay for that. You know, I mean, the neighbor down the street that never puts anything out, doesn't wanna pay for that landlord to put old, darn apartment full of furniture out there and they shouldn't have to.
I mean, I mean, we gotta hold you to look at that and that's kinda, that's kinda my, I guess I'm.
That's kinda what the committee kinda spoke about too, is, you know, giving it this year to get you something really detailed back to you.
That sounds great. I mean, that's exactly what I'd like.
We're on the same page.
Well, good deal. I, I'm, you know, whatever y'all wanna do as far as strengthening the teeth of the contract, that's, you know, y'all get a lot on there.
Are y'all ready? Because we've gotta, well, we have to vote on this so we could at least get this ready to go. Cause it's, it'll be up in December, we could go one year. So, we could change some of the tightening language, maybe tier five hundred first, thousand and then fifteen hundred dollars. We'll put some more leverage in there. Same thing with the work, repairs of roads. And what happens if you don't do this this time?
I mean, here's my, you, you've heard my view, which is just one out of the group. Comes down to it. And next March or April or whatever, we have some of these same issues and the contract does not allow us to take action or something. And I personally gonna be looking at it through y'all and say, you had the opportunity to make, to put the teeth in the contract and you didn't. So, if y'all are comfortable that we can make, hold him accountable with that contract, go for it. If you're not, then I'm would go to the extreme of put some serious teeth in there.
Rob, is it, is it in the general termination part of it? You can pretty much do anything you want, right?
Yeah, basically, one of the things that I took out of that was the, the opportunity to cure any defect within thirty days. I just took that out, I mean, because you didn't know when, when you're trying to cure something, not cure something. The bottom line is, is that if he fails to abide by material terms of the contract, then he had the right to terminate. And so, bottom line is if he's not picking up yard debris, he's not, you know, doing things in a timely manner. But anything that he, you know, there, there are words in the contract that they say if you fail to perform, those are grounds for termination, immediate termination.
Well, that's, that's good. I mean, those are contract language boilerplates, but you can't overnight terminate a garbage contract. You can't do that. So, I can't turn that that quick. We, it'd be a mess. So, we have to tier it through fines and penalties and through, you know, delays of processing, payment, what have you. We need to construct that in a way where it's.
I wouldn't wanna, I mean, just as, as someone who, who deals with businesses on a day-to-day and they have to have funding to operate or whatnot, I wouldn't ever wanna hold someone's check. I would just penalize it and take it away from the check. I don't, I don't wanna, if, if there's a, you know, this is a, a large contract, one of our larger contracts that we deal with, I'd hate to, you know, cause now, we're not penalizing just Richard, we're penalizing any of the employees too. Because if he doesn't get paid, he can't pay these folks. So, I'm not, I'm not in favor of holding the entire check. However, penalties are penalties and I'm sure he has a cushion in there as far as his profit margin. That would just eat at the company's profit margin or whatnot, but you know, I, I don't think we need to go to that extreme of holding somebody's entire check.
I know. He's agreed to everything in that contract. Okay, if there's anything he hasn't agreed to do. And if he doesn't do it, then we gotta get tough with him. He, we didn't, I mean, he said he'll do it. Okay, do it.
Penalties are, penalties are, I think, Pete, you can, you can, you got a lot of experience in that with, with Ricky. Y'all together could create something.
All right, we'll put some leverage in, Rob, we'll figure out the terminology. And just wanna make sure, so reiterate, one-year contract, we're gonna stay at the same rate. Once a week garbage, every other week yard trash, every other week junk, every other week recycle.
That's correct.
Right?
And a consistent schedule for these things.
Yeah.
Yeah, he used to say he couldn't do it, but it's amazing, every Monday, he's picked up my yard.
Yeah, I hear it the last two months or so.
But when it's every other week, he couldn't give a certain date. I mean, what's up with that?
So, we good?
We're good.
We're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Good job, fellas. I know y'all worked a lot of time on that, so thank y'all for all your hard work. We'll go next to line item three, which is the review of the proposed twenty-twenty local maintenance and improvement grant, L-MIG appropriations. Brother Jeff West, come on in there.
Good evening. At the last work session, y'all tasked me to go back and kinda rank the streets that I proposed to you and cut some costs to get it below the six fifty mark. I think you've got, all got a copy of the list that I'm proposing. Getting it down to six hundred forty-one thousand dollars under the six hundred fifty thousand dollar mark that y'all asked me to reach.
All right, let me get there.
This application is due. We'll have to finish it up in November, so we really need to move forward for next year's resurfacing. And just like always, we're looking at water, infrastructure and sewer, if there's, if there are any issues. And we're in the process of doing that now.
So, how much did you scale back on this?
Sir?
How much did you scale back from the original?
About, let's see, seventy, eighty thousand dollars from the original.
Is that part of Tipton Avenue? Is that not part of?
No, from eighty-two.
Or second.
Second Street, that's the split between Councilman Thales and Tritten.
Yeah, it's not, but I thought, that's not a state?
Not Tipton, Love Avenue is state until you get to Twelfth and then Tipton is state and Twelfth.
Well, I'm happy with the roads that are getting paved in my district. How about y'all?
Yeah, these are ones in my district that need it.
I will ask you though, I did get a phone call, I want you to go out and ESG grade. James, it was the James Avenue, Dallas, that area around Bowen Road. One of my past teachers that I just absolutely adore, she, or he asked me to take a look at, if I would take a look at that. Those are aside the city limits, so if y'all, we'll just take a look at those and grade those. I know as they come about. I know as they come about, we look at grading and then we try to do the worst streets, so.
So it's.
They're actually, I think they're in your district, Frank, I believe. Low End Road? Yeah. Yeah, it's right there on the edge of, of the city. Frank, send the six.
Yeah.
Huh? It's paid?
Is Bowlin?
Yeah.
What you're saying, resurfacing?
Resurfacing is what I'm talking about, I'm sorry, yeah, not, you know, resurfacing. It's a Griffin, Dallas, that whole little neighborhood over there. He was telling me that the last time I think that there was any resurfacing done was probably in the late nineties, ninety-six, ninety-seven, something like that. And, you know, that, it always, when it was your street or whatever, it's always a little bit, oh, it's been so long since they repaved it or whatever, but anyway, if you, if you guys don't mind taking a look at that.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Sure will.
But I'm, I'm happy with what's been proposed for my district, so. Any comments from anybody else? So this is the final, yeah, so I can post this on Facebook?
You're ready, we're, we're ready. You can post it, we submitted it to.
Once you submit it, okay.
G dot four.
It'll be on approval next.
I know, yeah, okay, all right, as soon as we approve, okay. I don't want to get ahead of myself like I did last time. Okay, all right, well, good deal. Any comments, council? No? All right, well, let's move along. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, well, you're up again for consideration for upgrading the utility meter collectors for, to a fourG wireless network.
Yes. At the last work session, y'all asked me to go back and look, we weren't up to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount budget. We were at two oh nine, to see if we could add any more to get better coverage of our system. I think you've all got this map right here in your package. This is the propagation study that Delta Municipal went back and done for us. Looking at it, for that extra money, we would only add about five percent more. But we don't know for sure. My recommendation is to go with the original amount. Let's, let's get these thirteen, because we're replacing seventy-three collectors with only thirteen, because they're better coverage. The propagation study is just a expectation or an estimate of what the coverage will be. I would rather see us get the thirteen, see what our coverage is after that for sure, and then come back if we could add one or two and increase it greatly. But looking at it, one or two extra ones at this point's not gonna increase it, but about five percent.
Okay. Have, have we began this, this project?
No, this is, this is replacing, these were originally put in eleven years ago when we originally started the reading system. And it's time now to replace them because they're going away from threeG, everything's going to fourG. Matter of fact, it's happening quicker, because I got a notice from Verizon, our company did. All of our threeG phones, we still have, they're telling us come January first, they don't work anymore. We, we've got to spend a lot of money replacing phones. So it's coming real soon with these collectors, so we need to go ahead and get ahead of it and get it replaced, or we're gonna be manually reading all the meters.
These are those commercial meters though, right?
No, these are residential and some commercial. All of our big meter replacement, they're all radio reading now.
Water meters.
Water meters, Jeff, didn't we, like, it was a commercial meters that we read?
Yes, we just done twenty-five commercial meters.
That's right.
They were replaced. We still got a lot of those to do, but they're very expensive to walk those out.
So, I mean, have we seen any sort of?
They're just, they've got two more meters and they'll be completely done. It'll take a month or go, or so before we'll see an increase.
Okay, all right, good deal. I've been curious to know how that comes out once.
I'd like to see the payback on those.
Yeah, seeing if we was right in our estimate. All right, any questions from council?
I'm good.
Good, good, Johnny, Frank? All right, good deal. Thank you so much, Jeff. All right, Jessica, you're the next contestant. Ordinance amending the alcohol beverage ordinance by adding bottle house licenses and regulations. And you can go ahead and talk about six as well, the review of alcohol beverage fees.
Okay, the ordinance, there were no changes, so it's same as what we talked about last month. Last month, y'all just asked me to get area alcohol fees, and I did that, and I provided that in the packet. So that's, that falls in y'all's court. Y'all want to make any changes? The only change that staff was proposing was to add fees for the bottle house license and, as we presented.
Bottle house.
So that would be two hundred and fifty dollars annual and fifty dollars if they want a daily permit.
Is that an add-on from, for, or is that, so it'd be two fifty plus the consumption?
No, because this is just for like art galleries. It's just based on the ordinance.
Okay, I got you, I got you. I had Jessica know, at the last meeting, I asked Jessica about alcohol fees, just to see where we were, how we compared to other cities. You can see the list of cities that she went and got. I mean, it's, that was really good exercise for, not only for her to see what we, what is out there, but also for us to know that, hey, we are not the most expensive, we're, we're really competitive, we're right here in the middle. And that's kind of where we, where I felt like that we, we probably needed to be. We're not the cheapest, but we're not the most expensive either. And, and we're right there, and we're very competitive with, with, with communities like Val Austin, Waycross, Perry, Leesburg, Columbus, Albany, Adel, and, you know, Douglas. So, you know, we're, we're right there in, in the midst of all of this. So Jessica, I appreciate all your hard work in looking at that. I know that was a lot of work that you did right there, but, you know, I think that showing where we are compared to other communities, we needed to know that, so I appreciate all of that, hard work for you.
Are y'all wanting to do anything additional before we get to the council meeting to change the resolution? Are we gonna just keep all the fees the same?
Yeah, I'm okay with keeping the fees the same. I mean, like I say, we're not, we're not the, the highest in the community, we're not the lowest, we're very competitively priced. So, I mean, I'm okay with keeping everything the same.
And I will say, on a business that has distilled spirits, beer, wine, and catering, that's at forty-five hundred dollars a year, the max, based off state law, is five thousand dollars. So if they have all four of those licenses, we're very close to being at the max.
Right.
As long as we're not over the max.
No, can't go over.
No, you can't go over.
So, and as Abby said, we would, we're looking at also adding the brewery and brew pub license. So I included that, so just be thinking about that. Once we bring that ordinance to you all, hopefully in December, we'll have something prepared. We will have to be adopting those fees. So I've, and I'll, I'll probably bring this back. There's not a lot of communities around here that have that.
See, Mulberry has one. Brewery? Five thousand dollars?
Yeah, brewery.
Yeah, so they're doing, they're doing the max.
Yeah. So like I say, I mean, yeah, when that comes to, we can argue about that price. But as far as the other fees that I was talking about, you know, the application fee, the package fee, the consumption, the catering, the whole, so all of these fees, I think we're, we're competitively priced.
Just keep them low.
So, yeah, I'm fine with keeping those the same, no changes to that. And of course, you're adding the brown, excuse me, the bottle house, and then we'll talk more about the brewery, so. Any questions, comments? Nope. All right, we will move into the resolutions. Resolution providing for an amended alcohol license for CVS. Jessica, you got a couple there for CVS, Friendly Express, and Logan's Roadhouse, and Walgreens.
Yeah, this is just for our annual renewals, they were due November first. I have about twenty-six that are still outstanding, so we should, we probably will get some additional. CVS and the Friendly Express, those both had a new manager change. And Logan's Roadhouse had a new licensee, so the licensee is their corporate officer, they have the same manager. And Walgreens had a new licensee and manager change. Staff has reviewed all of those applications, and we're recommending approval.
Good deal. Any comments from council?
Nope.
All right, we'll move into other business. Pete, your report.
Yeah, just two things, thank you. I'd like to thank, publicly thank Catherine Melcher, who's a professor at UGA. She really spearheaded the effort for the dog park planting on Saturday. Her group with native plants and how she wanted to do that was, was a great partnership, number one. But number two, great effort, and I'm excited for the spring to, to see how it looks. So, real well done, and Jessica really helped with that as well. So we did have a little grant money for that, for the plants itself, but they did all the work. Jeff and ESG dug the holes and prepped the, the area, so hopefully it'll be productive spring, it'll look real nice.
About thirty volunteers out there too, Sarah, so it's nice.
And then I wanted to share two things about the senior center with you. First, is that Ms. Fran and Tasha are doing training for fraud alerts, insurance claims, and letters that seniors are getting. And obviously, there, there, there being, there's a lot of it going on. We all get them on our phones, but seniors seem to be a pretty easy target. So through the senior center, we're doing training about what to do and not fall into phone scams and not, if someone calls you about insurance, what to do. So I, that's really valuable for our seniors, and I, I really commend them for, for doing that for, for the community. But more importantly, for all the, you know, diabolical things that are happening, that people taking advantage of and how it's happening, I think it's vigilant on our part to have that type of training. And to go a step further, thanks to Jonathan Taylor, who went over and did training for smartphones with the seniors and how to work your phone. And they love that, and Ms. Fran was bragging on him this morning. So little things like that, I just, I find very, very impressive, especially what we all deal with today, but especially seniors and what they try to overcome each and every day. So we could help them and make it easier, it's, it's, it's work well, well done. That's it for me, thank you.
Good deal. Council, comments? Frank, we'll start with you.
Well, as I mentioned at the last meeting about how the need for signage out there by Tiff Towers where the residents are crossing because of all the traffic. I want to let you know that on the DDA, as we're doing the crosswalk improvements, we're also discussing maybe doing some crosswalk enhancements out there to maybe slow down traffic too. We're looking at that.
John, you got anything on your mind, buddy?
No, I'm good with putting out.
All right, Jack, you got anything?
Made me think of the signs. Jeff, if we could look, I appreciate you've got a sign on each end of Twenty-Eighth about golf carts and stuff. As long as when you turn off the full wood, right on to Twenty-Eighth, the sign's right there. It had probably been up several weeks before I ever realized it was there, because you're worried about turning and the sign, you pass the sign before you ever see it. I don't know if there's, you know, where you have to put it within a certain distance, but if it was another, you know, six or eight feet on down, people would, would see it, I think, better. Because you're, you're just, you're turning and you don't see it.
We can probably move it to the next, we try to put the signs well appropriate lines where we're not, lots of little people appropriate lines.
Right. Take a look, and you'll see what I'm talking about, I think, you know, I appreciate the signs. I think they're, I think they're working. I haven't seen the number of kids driving like we were seeing.
I'll just finish up with saying, Frankie, I really appreciate you and MJ running a very clean campaign. I think it's very important, not only to our city, but to show young people that you can run an election without a lot of mudslinging, without just basically telling the facts, here's what we've done, here's what I want to do. You, you guys have done, you guys have ran your campaigns very honorably, and I, I appreciate that. And good luck to you tomorrow in your election. And that is it. We do need to go into executive session for legal matters, so if I can get a motion to that effect. I get a second, all right, all in favor?
You're quick, Johnny.